Approval of agenda and waiver of full reading of resolutions and ordinances. By motion of the city council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda. Does anyone want to pull a consent calendar item? Okay. City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, Mayor, we received seven supplemental communications.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll move.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. City Clerk, could you please take the vote by roll call?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Sistarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kalmyk, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalavet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, that's approved. Thank you very much. We'll move on to presentations and recognitions. Seal Beach COVID-19 Local Emergency Review. Chief Gonchar, do you have a report for us?
I do, thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, City Manager Ingram, City staff, and all listening or watching in tonight. I'm going to go over a couple of things tonight specifically related to COVID-19 and then a daily assembly that has been crewing over the week, or the past couple of weeks here in our city. Specifically since June 16th, 2020, Orange County cases have increased almost 18% to 10,595, with a death toll up over 15% to 269, which means that despite what seemed like a spike in cases and deaths over the weekend, we are actually seeing a smaller percentage increase than the week prior. The age breakdown as it relates to COVID-19 deaths in our county is as follows. Three have been aged 25 to 34, seven ages 35 to 44, 59 ages 45 to 64, and 200 have been aged 65 and over. The gender breakdown is as follows, males with 153 deaths and females with 116. Our Orange County hospitals have 351 cases hospitalized with 137 of them in the intensive care unit. Next, some bordering municipality and Seal Beach specific data. The city of Long Beach has 3,042 cases with 120 total deaths. The city of Huntington Beach with 489 cases. Cypress now at 99. Los Alamos 88. Garden Grove with 608. Westminster at 223. And Rossport has now been added to the list with a total of 14 cases. Here in Seal Beach, we now have 92 confirmed cases according to the Orange County Health Authority website. As we've previously mentioned, there is a lag time as the report and does not accurately reflect the current numbers to date. The slide you see this evening is actually out of date. We were unable to upload the newest data due to an outage on our internet. Therefore, the number that I'm going to tell you tonight is approximately 22 community cases instead of the 20 that is listed on the slide in front of you. Approximately 70 cases accounted for from our senior nursing facility. Currently and not yet on the county and state websites due to the lag in time, the Seal Beach Health and Rehab Center has reported a total of unfortunately eight deaths from COVID-19. 81 healthcare workers have tested positive and an additional 106 patients have tested positive. Healthcare workers who test positive are accounted for in their city of residence, therefore not the city they work in. Lastly, the Orange County Fire Authority calls for service involving infectious diseases from March 7th to June 14th, 2020, has totaled 7,645 approximately. With that, Seal Beach has made up roughly 2.5% of those calls for service with a total of 190 of them. Second on my presentation to you all tonight is the daily assembly that seems to be occurring every day here in our city, mainly up and down the Main Street area and then along the pier. They seem to meet near the Red Car Museum at approximately 12 o'clock each day. There have been no significant calls for service and our primary function is to protect all parties and their First Amendment right to protest and/or freedom of speech. We've seen several small crowds ranging from 25 to 45 people and have even heard that it sometimes reaches 100. There's an additional small group of now police supporters forming. And again, our job is to protect both sides no matter what the issue is that we have or had or seen before us today. In closing, unless there are any questions for me, I will pass it back to you, Mayor. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Chief Gonchar? Okay, we'll move on to oral communications. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any item not on the agenda unless authorized by law. No other business shall be considered. All email comments the city clerk received before the start of the meeting were distributed to the city council and made available to the public on the city's website. Email comments received after the start of the meeting will be forwarded to the city council after the meeting. City Clerk, do we have any emailed comments?
Yes, Mayor, as of now, we have three emailed comments. However, there could be more, but because of the outage due to the network, we're not sure and we were not able to load those up to the website, but they will be up after the meeting.
Okay, okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
City Attorney Report. Mr. Steele, City Attorney, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mayor. Prior to the meeting this evening, the council met in closed session regarding the item on the posted agenda. All council members were present and took a report from staff, but took no reportable action.
Okay, thank you. City Manager Report, do you have anything to report, City Manager Ingram?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I have one item tonight that I'd like to highlight and that is our summer 2020 edition of the Shoreline Recreation Guide that we anticipate being available via the city's website by the end of this week, as well as the opportunity for online signups. We're excited about several of the programs and events that we're offering this summer due to the ongoing certain times that we remain in, including new summer camps, science camps, and technology camps, many of which are being offered in a virtual environment. So an opportunity for us to provide this valuable service and programs to our community. Clearly, one of the advantages of our newly enhanced online recreation guide that we're implementing this year as a cost-saving opportunity is that staff will be able to revise and update information in real time and post our website in the event that program changes and/or cancellations become necessary. And some of the advantages of this newly enhanced feature by providing an online recreation guide would include just some of these. It's interactive and easy to use. Direct links to registration in our city website. Easy to share between users and social media. The ability to install the recreation guide as a shortcut app on user devices. And then we also have the ability to generate a QR code and mail to residents so they're aware of this new feature as well. So I really wanted an opportunity tonight to highlight that as a new feature that we're offering our community and our residents and really want to thank our recreation coordinator, Anthony Nguyen, for all of his patience, his creativity, his diligence in working through many challenges in order to get this summer's recreation guide published and continuing to provide several opportunities for our kids, families, and seniors throughout the summer. So I want to encourage our community to visit the Recreation Department page on the city's website at sealbeachca.gov, as well as to contact our Recreation Department at area code 562-431-2527, extension 1344. So that concludes my report tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Thank. Thank you very much. Council Comments. General Council member comments and reporting pursuant to AB 1234. Do we have any council member comments? Councilmember Vera Poppa, do you have anything for tonight?
No, thank you, nothing to report tonight.
Okay. Councilmember Moore, do you have something to report?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Councilmember Masalavet. Do you have something? Councilmember Masalavet.
Sorry, I didn't unmute. We had a meeting at the vector control last week and I'd like to once again reiterate that this is a very, very bad year for mosquitoes and you need to be highly conscious of the standing water around your home, your neighbors' homes. You know, these little critters fly around and so what's going on at your neighbors might be going on at you too because they'll just fly over the wall and bite you. So be careful and take care. And so far, there haven't been any West Nile virus positive tests, but they're anticipating later on in the summer that it will be a bad season for West Nile. So be careful. Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Mayor Pro Tim Kalmyk, do you have something to report?
Yeah, a couple of things. Last week, I attended the Rivers and Mountains Conservancy meeting and they're working on all kinds of projects along both the Los Angeles and San Gabriel rivers and I'm just waiting for an opportunity to see how we can get on their radar to help the cities up and down the San Gabriel River do some things to help clean it up. I also met with Westcom, for those that don't know. Westcom is our dispatching center that is a mutual operation of Seal Beach, Los Alamos, and Cypress. And so we discussed budgets for the next fiscal year. And we met also with the President of the Chamber and discussed some of the things that we're trying to do to help the businesses in the Main Street corridor, as well as in the other areas of Seal Beach to help the retailers and restaurants get back on their feet. We're definitely already starting to see some of the restaurants come in and get permits, temporary permits for tables to be placed on Main Street and outside their restaurants and other areas as well. And so we're progressing pretty well on that and we hope to see, you know, some good results. And that concludes my comments.
Okay, thank you very much. I also had a, just the day after our last council meeting, I guess it was, I took a tour of Main Street with Congressman Harley Ruda, Corey DeLeon from the Chamber of Commerce, and our Director of Development, Les Johnson. We met with a few business owners on Main Street and just sort of got some of their experience with this shutdown and trying to get their businesses back open and following the guidance in the reopening checklist from the state. So it was very interesting and I appreciate them including me. I attended an OCTA webinar regarding the Bolsa Chica Bridge closure. They managed a weekend before this to redirect the traffic to the other side of the bridge and then this last weekend, they tore down the old side of the bridge and so that was eventful for those people trying to use Bolsa Chica during the weekend. I attended the Mayor's City Selection Committee meeting, three OC Mayor's conference calls. I attended the West Orange County Water Board meeting and an airport land use meeting. I also attended a Gum Grove Park meeting with the Gum Grove Committee, met with our city arborist and Tim Kelsey and discussed putting some new, five new oak trees in there, which was very exciting news. So I appreciate them, everybody moving forward with that too. So that is all that I have to report. We'll move on to, let's see, there are no council items, so we'll move on to consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are enacted by a single motion with the exception of items removed by council members. Could I get a motion, please, to approve the consent calendar? Nothing's been removed?
I'll move.
Okay, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. City Clerk Harper, could you take the vote by roll call?
Yes, Mayor Sistarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kalmyk, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Vera Poppa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalavet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, that's five oh, thank you very much, that passes. We'll move on to item J. Public hearing regarding conditional use permit, CUP 199, an appeal of the Planning Commission's denial of a CUP to allow a type 86 alcoholic beverage control, ABC license, for the onsite tasting of beer, wine, and distilled spirits at 1101 Pacific Coast Highway. Senior Planner Steve Fowler, can you give a staff report, please? Senior Planner Steve Fowler?
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Yes, I can.
Okay, now we can, okay. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. This evening, I am presenting a conditional use permit 19-9. It's a CUP for type 86 alcoholic beverage license for the onsite tasting of beer, wine, and distilled spirits at a pavilion supermarket within the service commercial zoning districts at the pavilion supermarket. Next slide, please. As you can see, on February 3rd, the Planning Commission heard this application and a public hearing was conducted. And we had one neighbor show up and speak favorably on this particular item. The main reason for the decision by the Planning Commission was due to the strict interpretation of what we call Policy 600, which as you can see in this slide, there is a 70-foot double arrow over on Bolsa Drive, which shows that the building and the nearest residence is actually 70 feet away. Policy 600 requires that all alcohol, new alcoholic ABC licenses remain over 100 feet from any residential area. Next. So this type 86 license would require a conditional use permit to be approved along with the conditional use permit 05-3 that was previously approved back in '05 for the original sale of on-sale, or actually, I take that back, off-sale general alcoholic beverage sales. We recently went back and had a new resolution to provide an indefinite extension on that, which you may have seen recently. Next. So as part of this particular presentation, I want to give you a little bit of background on Policy 600, which was issued originally in 1993 and amended in 2016. The amendment in 2016 was to allow for alcoholic licenses within historic buildings, was the main intent of this. As you can see in condition D3, as I have on this slide, it requires the minimum 100-foot distance between establishment and residence. And that is measured from the closest edge of either the parking lot that takes care of the establishment, the business establishment, to the closest edge of the house itself. The subject property, as I recently mentioned, is 70 feet to the nearest residential property. Next slide. When this condition was amended in 2016, it was added in there a couple of words that kind of made the intent conflict with what we were really looking for, which was just to allow for it to happen in historic structures, which is read at the bottom. In the middle of this excerpt right here, which is from D3 subsection B, you would need a conditional use permit where the applicant establishes that the operation of the business and/or other land use would not interfere with the quiet enjoyment of property by residents and/or where the issuance of a conditional use permit for an alcoholic-related land use will be licensed only for beer and wine is necessary for the preservation of a historic structure as designated by Resolution Council. The "or" from the staff report for this policy most likely should not have been in there. But after taking a look at this policy, the staff has found that even though this does conflict with the intent of it, we do have new licenses that come in and we do have areas where larger stores could benefit from not having such a stringent council policy. So by looking at this, we've established that according to the policy that we have today, that this particular store has only had in the last year 24 calls of service. There were quite a few more, but most of them were due to traffic stops or things that happened out on the street where they actually used this particular address as part of their reporting area because it's a major address right there on Pacific Coast Highway. As I said, we had previously one resident come in and tell us that she would love this. We have not, as far as I know, before the the internet went down earlier, that we had not received any correspondence against or for this particular conditional use permit. And we've actually put some conditions in here that would make it a use that could be helpful for this particular store. We had one other type 86 license approved within the city. It was in the north end up at Ralph's, but they chose not to engage in that. Now, with this particular condition that allows for the quiet enjoyment for us to be able to approve this particular CUP, it's, in my belief, that maybe we need to take a look at this and clean it up a little bit, but that's up to the discretion of the council. If that's what you would like to do, let me know. I believe that from the information that we've provided, we can say that it has not interfered with the residential tranquility of the neighboring residents adjacent to this particular site. Next, next slide. As you can see, the floor plan here, the proposed square footage of this tasting area is only 107 square feet and it will be cordoned off when tasting are being offered. The size represents less than 1% of the floor area within the store. The pavilion supermarket has been existing, has an existing approval for selling beer, wine, and distilled spirits for off-premise consumption. The supermarket will continue to operate from 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. daily within the 48,000, almost 49,000 square foot footprint. As part of the request for the 86 license, minor alterations will be completed within the store to establish a small defined area for the tasting of beer, wine, and distilled spirits. The applicant is proposing to utilize vendors to provide the institutional tasting when the approved taste, within the approved tasting area. The instructional tasting will be limited to the hours of 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. and only one vendor with one product will be permitted at time. As you can see, I have this blown up, the alcohol area with the red rectangles around the area that will be utilized for tasting. The rest of it is the interior of the store. We did have two minor corrections within the resolution. The city clerk was given these in a red line set and others that was given to you. I would like to read into the minutes here, the corrections, the correct. One of them was in letter D and it reads this way. "The location, size, design, and operating characteristics of the proposed interior alterations would be compatible with the surrounding uses and will not adversely affect those uses or properties in the surrounding areas. The supermarket complies with the height setback and parking requirements for the general commercial zoning area and conditions have been imposed to ensure the proper instructional service of alcohol to patrons in compliance with City Council Policy 600-1, standard conditions for alcohol-related uses." This is where the correction comes in. "The hours of operation for instructional tasting are limited to 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. adhering to regulations in the Alcohol Act of 2011." After that, it all remained the same. The second section was in condition number 25. There was an error in the correct CUPs that were listed. It should read, "The subject property remains, remain subject to CUP 5-3 and 5-3, i.e., approved pursuant to Resolution 05-13 and 20-5 respectively." With that, that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Councilmember Vera Poppa, this is your district, do you have questions?
I have a quick question. Can you point to the entrance on the floor plan for us to see?
Let's see. Keep going to your left, down.
The little triangle is?
Yeah, I can't, let's see, here we go. So can you see that?
Yeah.
That's the main entrance and then that's the entrance that's on the side. So right along here is PCH and this is the loading area off the side of PCH.
Right, so what is that, like the deli department there?
So the wine, the beer coolers are located here, the wine racks are right here and you have the pastry and deli area over in these areas, that's correct.
And was that like seven days a week, did you say? What was the day for that, the days, I'm just kind of curious?
The days would, could be up to seven days a week, yes.
And the latest is 8 o'clock at night?
That is correct.
I have no other questions, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Moore, did you have any questions?
No, I'm supportive of this. I think it's probably help out the business, that's it.
Okay. Councilmember Masalavet, did you have any questions?
No, I don't. I remember reading in the
No, I don't. The, I remember reading in the staff report, was it the hours of operation from eight, oh, from eleven AM to eight PM?
That is correct.
Is the store open twenty-four hours?
The store is open from six AM to, I think, eleven PM.
Okay. All right, I really don't have any objection. I think it's such a small scale that we shouldn't have, we shouldn't have any, what?
I just suggested council members not express their opinion on the project until we have the public hearing.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, is that, is that all, Sandra?
Yes.
Okay, Mayor Protem Kalmick, do you have any questions?
No, not at this time.
Okay. I, I just have one question. It was a couple of places in the staff report. It mentioned eleven to eight, and then a couple of places, I don't have it in front of me, but it's like, mentioned twelve to five? Is there?
Mayor, that's where we corrected it, that I read into the minutes, that was the corrected hours. It should have been eleven AM to eight PM.
Okay, okay, that, I was just a little bit, wasn't sure I was understanding correctly. Okay, thank you very much. Okay. City Clerk, do we have members of the, we're gonna, first of all, let me open the public hearing. Clerk, do we have members of the public on call wishing to speak?
Yes, Mayor, we have two applicants on the line. But before we, but before we open the call to the applicants, I do have an email comment that was received, and I'd like to read that into the record.
Okay.
My name is Ann Harmon. Her address is twelve forty-one Marlin Avenue in Seal Beach. I am writing to ask the city council to approve CUP nineteen-nine to allow Pavilion's Market to set up an area in the store for onsite tasting of beer, wine, and distilled spirits. Staff notes that on the days of the tastings, and only one vendor will be presenting its product, the tasting will be time-limited. It was also pointed out that this is not a wine bar, pouring full servings, but a small taste that will be given to each person. I enjoy drinking wine, and I appreciate being able to taste a certain wine before I buy it. This affords the opportunity to sample different beverages before spending a goodly sum of an, on an untested bottle. I live five houses east of Balboa. Although there are residences that live less than one hundred feet from Pavilion's, I would recommend that the city council grant the conditional use permit in this instance.
Okay, thank you very much. Did the applicant wish to speak then? For one of the applicants?
Christina Mesa?
Hi, sorry. Yeah, I'm here. I didn't really have any comments. I think I was just here to try to answer any questions that you may have on the process.
Okay. Okay, on the other, did the other applicant wish to say anything? No?
Kevin Lee, would you like to say anything? It appears he's on the line too for support or for questions.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, City Clerk. Okay, I will then close the public hearing, and I will ask the council members if they have any additional questions. Anyone have any additional questions of staff?
No.
Okay. So I had one question. Are we are we, from what planner Fowler said, are we talking about changing the the council policy, or what exactly are we doing here at City Attorney?
Well, I think the thing to keep in mind about the council policy and it is the reason that it was, that the distance rule was put into a policy and not actually put into the municipal code was that the council was giving direction to the planning commission that as a general matter, the planning commission should not approve a CUP for alcohol within that, that distance requirement. But the reason it's written the way it is, is for exactly what's happening here to happen. The council was retaining the ability to interpret its own policy. But you want the, you want the planning commission to have a statement of policy, and if, if there's an appropriate case, it comes to the council for decision. So this is, this distance requirement, number one, is your policy, and you can decide whether or not to deviate from it in any particular instance, and staff is recommending in this case that for the small deviation, it's appropriate to do so and approve this use. I think it's an entirely separate question as to whether the council wants to revisit the policy itself and have staff work up some recommendations. I think staff feels like perhaps there's some wording changes that could be more helpful in the future, recognizing that the shops at the stores in this particular shopping center and the Rossmore Center and others are different than the properties on Main Street, for example. So you may wish to, after you make a decision on this appeal, give direction to staff separately as to whether you want to revisit the wording of the policy itself.
Okay, but it's okay to ask for a motion to approve this regardless of what's stated in the council.
It is. It is, and that would be a motion to approve the resolution that's before you, as Mr. Fowler reminded it.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second? Thank you. City Clerk Harper, can we get a vote by roll call?
Yes, Mayor. How do you vote, Mayor Sister Starset?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kalmick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Vera Papa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalavet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, that is approved, five-zero.
And Mayor, I just need to announce on this application, because it's a quasi-judicial application, the city's action on this conditional use permit is now final, and any person wishing to seek court review of the city's decision is bound by the statute of limitations set forth in Code of Civil Procedure, Section ten ninety-four point six. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to item K. Adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty-one operating and capital improvement budget. Set the appropriations limit for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty-one. Reaffirm the previously adopted fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty cost recovery schedule to be used for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty-one.
If I'm, this is Finance Director Kelly Telford.
Okay.
Do you want me to begin?
I was gonna call, that's fine, I will call on you. I'm looking to see who is gonna give the staff report. Kelly, go ahead.
Yeah, Kelly, Kelly, this is Jill. If I could, I just wanted just to mention a few things prior to your presentation tonight. Council is, as you know, before you, is the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-one operating and capital improvement budget. As you know, this budget was presented and discussed at two virtual budget workshops on May twenty-eighth and June fourth. As a result of the direction provided collectively by the council following these budget study sessions, staff worked diligently over the past week and a half to finalize the proposed budget for your consideration and adoption tonight, and I know it goes without saying that it was a significant amount of work in such a short period of time. In that regard, there have been minimal changes to the proposed budget since those workshops. And at this time, I will again ask our Finance Director Kelly Telford to briefly discuss our budget challenges. She'll review the fiscal year twenty twenty-one proposed general fund and CIP budget, as well as an overview of recommendations in the budget resolution, and then following staff's presentation, council discussion in the public hearing, then we'd be asking for council support with regard to the recommendation that's itemized in your agenda tonight. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kelly.
Thank you very much, City Manager Ingram. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, city staff, and community members watching at home. As City Manager Ingram mentioned, we presented this budget on May twenty-eighth and June fourth at the budget workshops, and there have been minimal changes, which we will go over tonight. Next slide, please. Before COVID nineteen hit and the Shelter at Home Directive was given by the governor, we knew this was going to be a challenging budget to prepare. And then, when the Shelter at Home was extended, this triggered an economic decline that has now officially become a recession. I'm telling you this to remind you that the budget before you tonight went through many iterations and was balanced a number of times, about six times, to be exact. We've done our best to project revenues, which has been difficult, given the fact that no one has ever seen closures like we have for the past few months. And we also did our best to estimate costs and prioritize needs based on the tiered approach to balancing, which we've been talking about, as well as the city council's goals. Next slide, please. I wanted to add a slide into this budget presentation that shows the overall citywide proposed budget. We are proposing a budget that totals sixty-three million, two hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred and three dollars. This includes operating budget transfers out, as well as the capital improvement program. It reflects the activities of thirty-seven funds across eleven departments, and includes one hundred and twelve full-time positions, as well as thirty-two point nine part-time positions. And again, that was citywide, all funds. This slide shows your fiscal year twenty twenty-one general fund proposed budget, which includes estimated revenues of thirty-four point seven million, and operating expenditures of thirty-four point eight million, and capital project expenditures of three million dollars. The revenues projected for the next year are conservatively estimated to reflect the current state of our economy. I've included a small reconciliation to show the general fund budget since we last discussed it at the budget workshop. As you recall, at that time, we presented council with a balanced budget. On June fourth, city council approved the COVID nineteen-related temporary business reopening support measures with an estimated budget of one hundred and forty thousand dollars. Council also took action to formally accept five hundred and sixty thousand dollars in CARES Act funding from the county for the Small Business Grant Program. And finally, at the last minute, we received updated information from OCFA for the fire services contract, which showed a savings of twelve thousand dollars. All of these combined resulted in the net use of reserves of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, which wholly goes towards the temporary business reopening support measures that were approved on June fourth by council. Also, at the last budget workshop, a question was asked about sales tax and whether or not the information presented reflects the most updated information from HDL. I do have an update from them, so I'll give you a brief overview of where we stand for sales tax. This information is as of last Thursday, which is the hot-off-the-press most updated information we have. The information for the twenty twenty, I'm sorry, the nineteen twenty estimated year-end numbers, as well as the the projections for twenty twenty-one are still good. And the expected reductions that HDL projected, we are seeing those reductions on a slow scale. If you remember, we really won't be seeing the real impacts of COVID nineteen until July because sales taxes reported a quarter in arrears. What we know for sure is that businesses do appear to have exercised the option to defer reporting their first quarter returns. There was an executive order from the governor that allowed businesses a ninety-day grace period. We are seeing about a thirteen percent decline in the total receipts for the first quarter. That's for January through March. This is pretty consistent with HDL's estimates. They had given us some early projections of how much these deferrals could be. Our estimate for Seal Beach was four hundred thousand. But I do want, it's important to understand, I do want to make sure that I'm clear, this is not a loss of revenue. This could mean just a delay. It's a timing difference. Normally, we would receive these funds in nineteen twenty, and they are included in our projection for the nineteen twenty column in your proposed budget. What this could ultimately mean is that we just receive it a little bit later, about three months late, which would be in the next fiscal year. So if this were to come to fruition, we would have a shortfall for nineteen twenty, but then we would exceed our projections in twenty twenty-one. Other than that, we discussed this budget at length, and I want to be transparent in saying that this budget does not have a lot of bells and whistles. It is lean, and it it's the kind of budget that focuses on maintaining staff levels and service levels and accomplishing the city council's strategic objectives first and foremost. Next slide, please. There is one supplemental item that is included in the proposed budget. In looking at the city council's strategic objectives, many of them relate to technology improvements and other special projects, all of which reside in the city manager's office. However, we were lacking the resources to be able to dedicate to making sure that those projects were completed. We are proposing to eliminate the full-time account clerk position in the finance department and the part-time management analyst position in the city manager's office to create a full-time management analyst position in the city manager's office. This position would be responsible for project management for the IT master plan and then other IT project implementations that have been in the works for the last two years. They would also be responsible for community outreach, assisting with social media outreach, and again, accomplishment of the strategic plan and goals for the city council. Next slide, please. As you can see, this would result in an overall cost savings across all funds of a little over a thousand dollars, but would result in a savings in the general fund of nearly eighteen thousand dollars. This would not increase the total number of FTEs and would also allow, besides allowing the city manager's office to accomplish those goals, it would allow the finance department to conduct a needs assessment for the entire department across all functions, which we hope to do by the end of twenty twenty. Next slide, please. So as we move into the capital improvement program, during the budget workshops, Steve Miter, the city's Public Works Director, gave an overview of the significant proposed CIP projects, and he also walked us through the more significant projects in the five-year plan. Next slide. If you recall, at the budget workshops, we discussed those significant projects, the ones that were proposed using general fund resources, which total about two million dollars. In this chart, it shows as being in the capital improvement fund, CIP, Fund Forty-Five, but these are funded using the general fund, OO One, resources. We also went through other projects for the other funds totaling about six point one million, which is primarily from the water fund, sewer fund, and the citywide grants fund. Next slide, please. After he went through the one-year CIP, or the ones that were proposed for twenty twenty-one, Mr. Miter walked us through the five-year CIP program to start the conversation regarding projects on the horizon. The purpose of the five-year program shown in the budget book is to begin evaluating and discussing projects that we believe will be necessary in the next five years. As I mentioned before, we will not be requesting the city council to take action on the five-year plan. We will only be requesting action on the one-year, which we just discussed. I also want to remind you that because of recent funding challenges, both because of COVID nineteen and the high cost and necessity of some of these projects, we are preparing a follow-up workshop in August or September that will be dedicated to the discussion of future CIP projects, including projects that are in the five-year, of future CIP projects, including projects that are in the five-year, along with the pool project. At that time, we will seek direction from the city council on which future projects should be given priority. Next slide, please. So as you probably noticed, the budget resolution has been updated this year to include clearer provisions. Some of the key recommendations in the budget resolution before you tonight include adopting the proposed operating and capital improvement budget, authorizing the financial and budget policies, authorizing a 2% salary adjustment for all bargaining units except POA and PMA, and a 7% increase for, I'm sorry, a .7% increase for executives, which represents CPI as of April 2020. As you can see, I have updated the resolution. I just want to point that out. You should have received an updated version earlier today that has the correct increases for the executive employees. I apologize for the confusion with this one. When we were drafting the new resolution provisions, I got a little carried away and just listed all of the groups. But it is budgeted properly. It was just the resolution that needed to be revised. The resolution also includes provision to allow the city manager to delegate purchasing authority to the department heads up to certain limits. And then it also approves using the current fiscal year 1920 cost recovery schedule for 2021 until we bring back recommendations as a result of the citywide cost allocation plan and fee study. We're hoping to have this done a little bit later this fall, but it could be the beginning of the year. It just depends on how quickly things start ramping up with businesses reopening and being able to get back to normal business. Now, this slide only has some of the key provisions. There are other provisions in the budget resolution that are included in your agenda packet. This concludes my brief overview of the proposed fiscal year 2021 operating and capital improvement budget, and I am available for questions.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to some council member questions. Council Member Moore, did you have any questions?
Yes, on the delegating the purchase authority, what's the amounts for that?
If you give me one second to open it up, I believe it is $15,000 for the department heads, except for Public Works and the Finance Director, which I believe are up to the city manager's limit. But let me confirm that. It's in the resolution. I apologize, I don't have it open.
And can you confirm that the city's not going to spend on the capital improvement until the meeting in August?
That is correct. As we discussed at the budget study session, we will not begin those projects until we have our follow-up workshop.
The spending limitation is in Section 7 of the resolution, and you described it correctly.
Perfect, thank you. So yes, it's $15,000 per purchase for all of the other department heads. And then for finance, there's additional authority for purchase up to the city manager's authority.
Okay, thank you.
That's for finance. That's for expenditures outside of the finance department. The finance department expenditures are the same $15,000 limit for all the other departments.
Okay, that's all I have for now.
Okay, Councilmember Vera Papa, did you have questions?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Masalavet, did you have questions?
No, I don't. I think they've done, the staff has done a wonderful job at trying to put this together, to keep all of our concerns addressed, and as balanced as you can make it under the circumstances. And I appreciate their hard work and time, and all the revisions that went into this document to get it where it is. Thanks.
Okay. Mayor Protem Kalmy, did you have questions?
No, I just, I wanted to say I concur with Councilwoman Masalavet, and really do appreciate the effort and the willingness to take heed to many of the points that were brought up by counsel in terms of the amount of transparency and flexibility that we wanted to see from finance department. So thank you.
Okay. And I'd also like to thank the finance department. I know Elena also has a role in this, and Kelly for all the revisions. I did have one question. It was on the last, I think it was on the last slide. It was a .07% or a .7%?
It should be .7. Did I?
I think it's .07. I think you said .7, but I think the slide may say .07. So I just was trying to make sure I was hearing that right.
You were right. I apologize for that. The resolution does have the correct .7%. My conversion of CPI to percentage was a decimal off on that one.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, so we are going to open the public hearing. City Clerk, do we have members of the public on the call wishing to speak?
No, Mayor. There are no members of the public on the call wishing to speak. However, I do have two email comments that I will read into the record.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. The first one is from Robert Gober, and it says, Dear Councilmembers, City Councilmembers, I would like to thank you for taking the time to review and consider the 16 pages of questions that I submitted for the two budget workshops. Most of these were answered through your follow-up questions to staff. Ironically, however, the first question that I posed on May 28th was not completely answered until the final budget was issued last week. Was a July pay raise of 2% for police and executive management employees included in the budget? I had asked this because the police contracts expires on June 30th, 2020, and the council had not yet made any public commitment to grant optional or discretionary cost-of-living pay raises to the executive management employees. Staff stated at the workshops that pay raises for police were not included in the budget. However, nothing was said regarding raises for executive management employees. The city manager's message, which was not included in earlier drafts, now makes clear that the budget does include 2% raises for executive management employees. Furthermore, Section 5 of the budget resolution authorizes the city manager to implement these raises on July 1st. I have two concerns regarding this authorization. The first is that 2% exceeds the cost-of-living raise provision in the executive management contracts. Each contract has an identical provision that provides for July increases at the council's discretion, ranging from 0% to 3% based on the change in the local inflation index during the preceding April-to-April period. This year, the preceding April-to-April rise in the local CPI index was only 0.70%. Therefore, the maximum inflation raise consistent with these contracts would be 0.7%. A raise of 2% is almost three times this amount. My second concern is that the deliberative process for granting discretionary raises to executive management employees should involve more than simply adding three words to a staff report or five words to a budget. In my following of city budgets since 2004, I cannot recall any budget resolution that similarly authorized executive management pay raises. The previous cost-of-living increase effective July 2019 was approved by council in an open session on December 9th, 2019, after a review of a staff report specific to executive management employees. The decision was preceded by five closed sessions beginning in May 2019 with agendaized discussions of conference with labor negotiator regarding a list of employee organizations that included executive management. This was a full deliberative process that allowed numerous opportunities for the public to be involved and the council to be fully informed. In contrast, the current decision is being made without a dedicated staff report, and subsequently, no public disclosure of the cost-of-living provisions in the executive management contracts, no disclosure of the change in the inflation index, nor the cost of the proposed raises. To address these two concerns, I would strongly urge the council to amend Section 5 of budget resolution to strike the reference to executive management employees, and direct staff to return to council with a full staff report analyzing and supporting the recommendation for a 2% raise. An alternative to at least address a lack of consistency with the existing contract language would be to insert a 0.7% limit to the executive management raises. I thank you for your consideration and your service, Robert Gober. And I have one more, and it is from Joyce Ross Parquet, and it says, to city council, well, the subject says city budget and other questions. And it reads, to city council, why are there always questions on what the city manager is doing? Do taxpayers have to suffer all the problems that are created here by the city manager? A pay raise over what is required? What about the in-lu parking money paid for Leisure World Bus? Those businesses who pay that fee need that money now to restart their business. Who owns the four lots on Marina Drive next to the new homes? Is that the vacation rental property that the city owns? If so, why not sell hotel for city bed tax? Does the city have the money from the insurance company for a restaurant on the pier? How much money has the city lost from closed Pier Restaurant and Rivers Inn Restaurant? Why was a Seal Beach car and Seal Beach cop at the Newport Beach protest? Did taxpayers pay for that trip down there to help? There was a break in an AT&amp;T, and they stole all the phones that was out on the counters. Joyce Ross, Old Town resident. That concludes the email comments.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, if that is all, I will close the public hearing. Are there any additional council member questions? Okay, seeing none, could I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2021 operating and capital improvement budget.
Okay, is there a second? I will second that. And City Clerk Harper, could you take the vote by roll call, please?
Mayor, can we just verify that that's Resolution 7048 and all of the other actions that are included there?
Okay, adopt the fiscal year 2021 operating and capital improvement budget that the appropriations limit for the fiscal year 2020-21 reaffirm the previously adopted fiscal year 2019-20 cost recovery schedule to be used for fiscal year 2021. And that is Resolution 7048.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. City Clerk Harper?
Mayor Sister Starsek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kalmy, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Vera Papa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalavet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, that passes 5-0. Thank you. There is no unfinished continued business. We will move on to new business. Item L, ratification of subrecipient agreement between the County of Orange and the City of Seal Beach for coronavirus relief funds for necessary expenditures incurred due to the public health emergency with respect to COVID-19. City Manager Ingram, is there a staff report?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. Just wanted to provide a couple introductory comments before I turn this item over to our Finance Director. As the council will recall, last month, the Orange County Board of Supervisors authorized the distribution of $26 million it received from the coronavirus relief fund to Orange County cities based upon the 2010 population counts provided by the U.S. Census Bureau, which resulted in an allocation of approximately $204,000 to the City of Seal Beach to offset direct costs not reimbursed by FEMA. So in order to receive the second round of CARES Act funding, the city is required to enter into a subrecipient agreement with the county. This agreement allows for the city to receive reimbursement of COVID-19-related costs that have been incurred, including, but not limited to, personal protective equipment, personnel costs, disinfection of facilities for the period of March 1 of this year through December 30, 2020. As a result, I signed and submitted the subrecipient agreement between the County of Orange and the city on June 18th in order to immediately secure this grant funding on behalf of the city. The agreement provides for the county then to disperse funds to the city no later than 10 days following execution of the agreement, which is before you tonight, for ratification. So at this time, I'll turn the presentation over to Kelly Telford to provide some additional details related to these relief funds. Kelly?
Thank you. Good evening again. That was actually a very thorough introduction, but I will add one thing. I don't want to repeat what City Manager Ingram said, but the one thing I do want to stress is that these funds would provide the other 25% that FEMA isn't reimbursing for all of the costs that City Manager Ingram mentioned, PPE, personal protective equipment, some of the disinfection and the closure of city facilities. We're preparing the reimbursement for FEMA, but they only reimburse up to 75% of eligible costs. This provides for the other 25%, which essentially would make the city whole, resulting in no out-of-pocket money from the general fund, which is fantastic. Based on the preliminary estimates that we've calculated out, we do believe that between the amount from FEMA plus this $200,000, it would cover 100% of the costs that we anticipate through the remainder of the emergency. That concludes my overview, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, do we have council member comments? I'll start with Councilman Moore.
No, no comments.
Okay, Councilmember Vera Papa?
No, no comments, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Masalavet?
No, I have nothing.
Okay. Mayor Protem Kalmy?
No, not at this time.
Okay, and I'm good, too. I'm happy to hear we'll be whole. So thank you very much. City Clerk Harper, could you, well, we need a motion, I guess, right? Okay, can I get a motion, please, to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay, is one of you want to second it?
I do.
Okay. All right. City Clerk Harper, could you take the vote by roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Sister Starsek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kalmy, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Vera Papa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalavet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, that passes 5-0. Thank you very much. We'll move on to Item M, consideration of establishing and administering a Seal Beach Small Business Relief Grant Program. City Manager Ingram, is there a staff report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'm just going to provide a couple introductory comments on this item before I turn it over to Les Johnson. If the council will recall, at your June 8th council meeting, you unanimously ratified a subrecipient agreement between the County of Orange and the city for coronavirus relief funds for economic support provided by the city. That agreement allows each city to directly administer grants to small businesses consistent with the requirements of the CARES Act, and the city received approximately $562,000 in CARES Act grant funding. As staff mentioned during your consideration of this item on June 8th, we've been analyzing options for administering and managing the Small Business Grant the Small Business Grant Funding Program, considering our limited staff resources as well as a myriad of compliance requirements with this grant funding. Tonight, we're presenting you with a recommendation for establishing a business relief grant program so that we can make this grant funding available to eligible small businesses in our city as soon as possible. So at this time, I'll turn the presentation over to our, our Community Development Director, Les Johnson, and he will briefly summarize the Seal Beach Small Business Relief Grant Program. Les?
Thank you, City Manager Ingram. Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers. Next slide, please. The coronavirus pandemic has significantly impacted virtually every business here in Seal Beach, and our small business community has been hit especially hard. Most were required to close when the state issued a stay-at-home order, and most are not deter, as most are not determined to be essential businesses. Earlier this month, the city received approximately five hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars in CARES Act funding from Orange County through Supervisor Michelle Steele's office. Received of these funds, we're conditioned to use solely to directly benefit Seal Beach small businesses through grants to help cover operational costs associated with the impacts from COVID nineteen. Next slide. With the expect, expectation of establishing a small business loan program, staff reached out to the Orange County Inland Empire Small Business Development Center, or the SBDC, for assistance. The SBDC is a federally funded organization that provides no-cost consulting services to small businesses. When the CARES Act funds were first released, the SBDC immediately stepped in to offer their assistance with various grant and loan programs being offered by cities here in Orange County. Specific to the current CARES Act funding, the SBDC is able to assist staff with administering the entire grant program. The SBDC is currently providing this service to a number of local cities such as Newport Beach, Charleston, Fountain Valley, and also Los Alamos. And they are providing that service at no cost to the cities. Next slide. Staff has drafted program guidelines for your consideration this evening. The guidelines follow the CARES Act requirements and are quite similar to grant program guidelines that have been recently established in other Orange County cities. The guidelines addressed, address a number of items such as grant eligibility requirements, terms and conditions, grant funding amounts, various eligible activities, required documentation, applicant, the application awards process, as well as a post-grant follow-up with the small businesses. Our intent is to provide a straightforward and timely application process as we want to see the award and distribution of these grant funds out to the small, our small businesses as soon as possible. Staff also anticipates that appro, that the approximately five hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars in grant funding should result in about sixty to eighty small businesses receiving grant funds. Next slide. The grant amounts are proposed as follows. Businesses with five or fewer employees would receive up to five thousand dollars. Businesses with six to ten employees receiving up to seventy-five hundred dollars. Businesses with eleven to thirty employees receiving up to ten thousand dollars. In order to be eligible for the grant funding, a small business must meet at least one of the following requirements. Be deemed a non-essential business and forced to shut down, or sales have been down more than twenty-five percent compared to the previous three months prior to the pandemic, or had to lay off at least one employee or one or more employee of the employees contracted the coronavirus. Next slide. There are also a number of terms and conditions that would be required. The business must be for-profit and located in Seal Beach, and they also must be located in our commercial or industrial areas, one of those spaces. They must have an active Seal Beach business license and have thirty or fewer employees. I want to mention this really quick. There was a lot of discussion about twenty-five or thirty. It is, we've recommended or recommending thirty or fewer employees. And also, that it, it would be either full-time or an equivalent combination of full and top, part-time employees making up the, that, up to thirty employees. That the annual gross receipts would not be exceeding fifteen million dollars over the past three years, that they'd be in good standing with the city with regards to any accounts, no liens, and no code violations. They would need to disclose if they've received either the Paycheck, Paycheck Protection Program or the Economic Injury Disaster Loan Capital. This would not necessarily mean that they're not eligible for the grants, but priority would be given to those businesses that have not received those funds first. Uh, they must also be following the state and county reopening guidance, and they must also submit all the required supporting documentation with their application. Next slide. The, the types of activities these funds can be used for is primarily to cover day-to-day expenses of the business. So that can be rent, mortgage payments, their utility bills, their payroll expense, marketing, or the like. And they could also use those funds to obtain personal protective equipment for staff or customers, and also any modifications that they have made in order to provide proper social distancing in, as, as required by the, the guidelines. The application process, uh, again, will be heavily focused upon the Small Business Development Center and their assistance, but we'd also like to utilize the chamber, especially in the initial step of getting the information out to all of our local businesses. There will also be two webinars conducted by the SBDC, and which the chamber would also participate on that. The applications would be received either online via email, and then we're also going to be providing a single day to be able to submit applications in person here at City Hall, since City Hall is still currently closed. The Small Business Development Center, upon receipt, would review those applications. And next slide. If more qualified applications were received and funds were avail, are available, then a lottery system would be conducted in order to allow for an equitable distribution. The SBDC would also work with the selected applicants once they're notified to collect all of the required documentation. And then, once all that documentation is received, a payment would be made. The applicant would also be required to agree to an inspection that would be intended to confer, to confirm the funding is being used in accordance with the program requirements, if that inspection is necessary. I also wanted to mention, too, that the Small Business Development Center is offering to be able to work one-on-one with all applicants, even those that did not receive funding throughout the next twelve months. And then also, they would provide to the city a six-month, a twelve-month report with regards to the activity and their engagement with businesses in the community. Next slide. And with that, I have the recommendation here for your consideration. That would conclude my staff report, and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, we'll go to council member questions. Uh, Councilmember Moore, did you have any questions?
Um, yes, on the, on the compare, if you, on the comparative three months of the previous three months, I just had a comment that a lot of, because it's, a lot of businesses are seasonal, it might be a good idea to do the comparative three months from the previous year versus the previous three months.
That, that, that's an excellent point. We can certainly make, make that change to the guidelines.
Okay, and I, the other thing is, I'm, I'm a little worried that, I don't know how we're going to market this to the businesses, but the amounts seem kind of small. I was, I was thinking, if we doubled those amounts, then, it'd be a little more attractive to a business. I'm just thinking as a business, as a former business owner. Um, and then, the other thing is, what's the timing on, on getting the funds out to the businesses? Uh, in your, if you're, if you can estimate it?
Sure, uh, in my estimation, based on the conversations that we've had with the Small Business Development Center, uh, we hope at the latest to have those funds distributed by the end of July, if not sooner. Assuming everything is approved tonight, we would, by no later than the end of next week, start with our notification of the program and soliciting of applications. And, and then, the middle of the month would be the review and finalization of, of that selection. And then notification, collection of information needed, and then distribution, again, by the end of July, if not sooner.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Vera Papa, did you have any questions?
Yeah, I was just wondering, how do they verify that the money's being spent correctly?
Well, that, they, uh, some of it will be obvious based on, you know, improvements that have been made, and there's also the ability, if there, if, as I understand it, if there's been some expenditure occurring, they can show, obviously, the receipts associated with the work that's been performed. Um, and then, again, with regards to general overhead costs, be it rent or payroll, it'd be a matter of, of being able to provide that documentation to us. In my conversation with the SBDC, it's been fairly easy for small businesses that are awarded these grants to be able to show expenditure of that at these amounts.
Great, okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Masalavet, did you have questions?
No, I don't. I think this is a really good opportunity for small business to take advantage of a small amount of money that'll be available to them. But nevertheless, it's available to them if they choose. I have no other questions.
Thank you, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Calmick, did you have questions?
No, just to comment, I, I think, um, this is one of the few programs that I've ever seen that pretty much covers all of the bases. And it's, it's going to be amazing, you know, if it, if it works the way it's outlined to be able to get, no matter how much the amounts are, some financial relief to the businesses as quickly as possible. And, you know, it, it removes the, the judgment and choosing amounts of money and to whom the amounts go to by having a third party administer it. And even better than that, that the third party is not charging us a fee to do that. Uh, plus, they provide the additional help to the businesses. So, I'm, I'm very pleased with this program. I wish we could have gotten more money from Orange County.
Okay, thank you. And I would like to agree with Mr. Calmick that I, I'm, I'm, I'm happy that someone else is handling it, and, and I hope we can get it out quickly. Um, I know it may not be a lot of money, but I'm actually happy to have it try to cover as many businesses with poss, as possible because it's a lottery, maybe, what we have to do, but I, I don't want anybody to have to miss out. So, anyway, thank you very much for all your work, Les, uh, because I'm sure it was a lot of work to set this up, so. Um, okay, uh, can I get a motion?
So, move?
Okay, is there a second to?
Second.
Sir Harper, could you call for the vote by roll call, please?
Mayor Sister Darsic, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Calmick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Vera Papa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalavet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, that passes five oh. Thank you very much. Okay, um, we're going to move on to adjournment. Um, I would like to, um, close the me, this meeting in memory of actually two College Park East residents that have died this month. Russ Wendell, who was a former neighbor of mine, very nice man, passed away. Uh, also Roger Vittito. With Father's Day just yesterday, he has a lot of children and grandchildren that are, that live, actually, in College Park East. And, uh, we, I give all of our condolences to their families, and so sorry. Okay, I will adjourn this meeting, City Council meeting, to Monday, July twenty seventh, twenty twenty, at five thirty PM, to meeting closed session, if deemed necessary. And we will stay in the meeting for, or adjourn, I guess, to the Special Successor Agency Matters. Please stay on the Zoom meeting for those, and any others may be excused now for the meeting. Thank you.